Today, we're briefing for the next meeting, November 4th, 2021. We have a lot of items to discuss on our regular agenda, but we're going to have some discussion items to begin with. And the first one is with the man who is in charge of and does a heck of a job with all the people he's got to try to beat COVID-19, Joshua Swift. Mr. Swift is here to, by remote, to give us a remote update on the latest news from the COVID-19 arena. And Joshua, if you're there, we'll turn it over to you now.
Yes, so good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Just give a brief update. I have eight slides to share with you this afternoon. You can see our COVID cases as of today. Actually, this is from yesterday, this information. We had 56 cases yesterday. That is over 1,037 for the last 14 days, and our average cases per day is now down to 74 per day of the last 14 days. Percent positivity is down to 5.8%. And you can see the percentage of the population 18 years of age and older who are fully vaccinated is now over two-thirds, at 68%, and 72% have at least one dose. Sadly, since the beginning of the pandemic, we've had 562 deaths, right at 100 of those deaths have occurred since September the 1st. You can see our pediatric cases over the week of October 17th through the 23rd. You can see that those numbers have went down significantly from where they were in late August and September. Next slide is one I've shared with you before. You saw our numbers through, since the beginning of May, when they got to their lowest point at less than 40 cases per week. Then we had the surge, then went a drastic uptick through late July and all through August, where we peaked at almost 1,500 cases per week. And you can see now the latest numbers for the 17th through the 23rd of October show that we are at under 500 cases per week. This is the first time we've been under 500 cases per week since late July. And we are at a third of where we were at our peak of 1,496 cases. Our percent positivity by week, you can see the weekly average where we peaked at 14% and now we're holding steady at 6.2%. The gold standard for us, for any community, is to be below that 5%. So we're almost to that mark, and we hope it continues to go down. Next, we're looking at the percentage of the population that is partially and fully vaccinated. You can see the demographic information by race and by age. This note that we're continuing to see the numbers of those 12 to 17-year-olds and 18 to 24-year-olds go up. But actually, it's interesting that throughout from week to week, we still see the numbers for our 50 to 64 and 65 to 74, those groups over 50 continue to tick up as well. Last three slides, wanted to talk about boosters and where we're going with 5 to 11-year-olds. So recently, last week, we were given the green light late last Friday for boosters that were approved by, for Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna. Johnson &amp; Johnson was for adults 18 or older who previously received that vaccine at least two months after their first dose. Moderna, it was similar to Pfizer in that it was for individuals 65 and older or individuals 18 to 64 at high risk due to underlying health conditions or living or working conditions. So we have seen over the past week, we're probably set our schedule where we should see around 1,300 or 1,400 individuals come through the Health Department this week, Monday through Friday is what we're expecting. Putting in perspective, for the first 20 days in October, we saw 1,900 individuals at all of our clinics here at the Health Department as well as outreach events. So we're almost going to meet that same number this week. We're going to be close to 1,400, maybe even 1,500 by the time the week is over. And this is primarily being driven by the boosters. As you know, you can also now mix and match the booster. So if you got Moderna for your first two doses, you could decide to get Pfizer, you could decide to get J&amp;J, you can mix and match whichever way you wish. So my next slide is that we're encouraging people to make their appointment, to go to this bit.ly web address, or you can go to Forsyth.cc/covidupdate to make an appointment. Again, we had 400 people make appointments and come in on Monday, around 300 on Tuesday, 250 yesterday, probably going to hit about 250 today. So the demand has went down a little bit, but we're still continuing to see individuals coming in, and we're open to 8:00 p.m. this evening. And then my last slide is the future, 5 to 11-year-olds. We expect final approval by the CDC and the North Carolina Division of Public Health next week for Pfizer for these individuals from this group. We are working with the school system, and the plan is to offer the vaccine. We're going to be going into two elementary schools in mid-November, on November the 13th, that's on a Saturday, at Gibson and Con Oak. We'll also have the vaccine available here at the Department of Public Health, Monday through Wednesday and Fridays from 8:00 to 5:00, as well as Thursdays from 8:00 to 8:00. And you see that the Saturdays we have planned, if approved in time, we hope to have the vaccine available on that first Saturday in November 6th, as well as the 13th and 20th, taking a break for Thanksgiving, and we'll be back on the 4th and 11th, in addition to our normal clinic hours. That concludes my presentation. I'll stop presenting the slides and be happy to take any questions or comments.
Any questions for Mr. Swift, Commissioners?
Just make one comment, Joshua. I want to thank you for those Saturday hours that will make a big difference.
Excuse me, I had to turn up my volume. It was a...
Mask.
Sorry.
He can't hear you.
I didn't have my volume on. I just wanted to congratulate you for adding the Saturdays already, because that would be very convenient for parents.
Thank you, Dr. Mark. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Joshua, the children 5 to 12, would they be able to receive those from their pediatrician?
Yes, ma'am. They can be able if their pediatrician offers them. We are, we are getting our supply. We should get the vaccine, but not be able to administer it until late, excuse me, early next week. And we are, have offered to Novant and Baptist to see what their needs are and to make sure that they have enough as well. But if they're... Yes.
Mr. Swift, there has been some in the media, and I say media, it could have been newspapers, television, comments from people who say, "Well, I'm the parents of a five-year-old or a six-year-old, and I'm not sure I'm taking the right move if I was going to have my child vaccinated." What's your reply to that?
Well, I'll say thank you, Chairman. You know, I have a 10-year-old myself. My 14-year-old has already gotten it. Myself and my wife have gotten it months ago. So we plan, you know, my 10-year-old, it'll protect him, it'll protect his classmates, those he's around, his grandparents. And you think about, too, it also protects those that are younger, that are two, three, and four, who can't get the vaccine yet. So just, I hope and I believe with the boosters that we have now, and with the 5 to 11-year-olds being eligible in just probably a week or a week and a half, that we, this will be that final chapter, that last chapter of this pandemic, as we get the overwhelming majority of the population vaccinated.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, Mr. Swift, thank you very much for their report. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our meeting is Dr. Janet Spriggs, who is the President of Forsyth Technical Community College. And today, she has an update for all of us on what's taking place in the areas of what's happening in schools and within particular attention to Forsyth Tech. Dr. Spriggs, are you available?
Yes, sir, I am. I hope that you can hear me.
Very well.
I am, okay, wonderful. I am attempting to share my slides, and I hope that you can also see my slides. I'm not sure, oop, I don't want to do that. Okay.
Looks good.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you to share the President's Quarterly Report with our Board of Commissioners. I want to start with letting you all know about the, something that you already know very well, because you were just with us earlier this week, most of you, for our aviation grand opening of our Maisius Woodruff Aviation Technology Lab. And I just want to say thank you very much for being with us. It was a great celebration. We are thrilled and excited to have this building open and also to be at the Smith Reynolds Airport, but most importantly, to have all of the work going on for the program, to get the programs that we're going to have for the aviation industry at this location up and running and get our students engaged in that. I have a very quick PowerPoint, it's not a PowerPoint, I'm sorry, a video to share with you. A couple of our Commissioners were able to see this on Tuesday, but the majority of you were not there. So I'm going to attempt to play that. It's about a minute long, just to give you a little bit better look into what we're going to be doing now that we have the building at the airport. So I'll play that for you now. So again, just wanted to say thank you very much for your support for, and let me not play that again, your support for the aviation project and for being with us on Tuesday to celebrate the grand opening. We will have much more information coming to you throughout the next few months about the students and the programs that they are enrolled in. Additionally, I want to update you on a few other projects that are also funded with county capital dollars and grant funds. The Robert L. Strickland Phase 3 of our Forsyth County Construction Bond project is underway. We did make a decision to change architects for that project. Basically, we were not happy with where we were with moving the project forward to construction phase, and so we made a decision to cancel the contract with the architect that we have there. We have another architect now that we are working with, and we are very pleased with the progress that we are making on moving these projects or this project forward. We do anticipate that phases, we're breaking this project into three different phases. Two of those phases will be completed next year, and the third final phase will be completed in 2023. But that project is moving forward. Our Learning Commons project, we are currently in the process of starting that project as well, which was the next phase of county construction bonds, and we do anticipate that that project will be completed in 2023 as well, the early part of 2023. All of these projects have to go through state construction processes, and that does take some time, but we do anticipate having a project complete, probably construction manager at risk project by early 2023. In addition to that, we are in the design phase for the Transportation Center Edition project. That is moving along nicely. I mentioned the last time I came to meet with you that we had selected our designer and that the programming and design was underway, and that is moving forward now. I want to give you an enrollment update. It does look like things are progressing well with enrollment as we continue to deal with COVID. As you all know, COVID did have a significant impact on our enrollment for our curriculum, excuse me, and our continuing education programs. Last year, we had a large drop in curriculum program enrollment, but I'm very happy to say that we are 4% higher currently than we were last year, and we have even grown from where we were pre-pandemic. So we're up 2% over the pandemic, or I'm sorry, over the enrollment that we realized in 2019 before the pandemic. This is very different from the national trend. Many schools, especially larger schools across the nation, are having difficulty getting students to come back as they are continuing to be faced with challenges as a result of the pandemic. So we are very grateful that we have been able to put in place some strategies to get students to come back to school. We've had a lot of federal assistance with federal stimulus dollars that we've been able to use, as well as state money that we have been able to use to help students find their way back to college, and we're pleased with that. We still have some students, particularly the most vulnerable populations of our student base, that are struggling with challenges that remain with the pandemic. So we don't have as significant growth in enrollment with some of those students, but we're working on what we can do, whatever we can do, to help mitigate those barriers for those students and get them back moving strong. Additionally, I want to report some of the data from our Vision 2025 Strategic Plan. As you will recall, I provided a strategic plan document to you guys last year, and I have promised to share data points with you as those data become available. And this is some very good news that I'm pleased and happy to be able to share with you today. We have our completion rate, our three-year college completion rate has grown by 14% in five years and 2% from last year to this year. Our four-year college completion rate has grown by 16% in the past five years and a 7% increase from 2020 to 2021. So we're very, very pleased to see these positive trends in completion. I want to break it down just a little bit. You can see here that we have gone from a 17% completion rate for students who started with us in fall of 2014 to a 31% completion rate for three years for students who started in the fall of 2018. We still have some work to do on our achievement gaps, which is another one of our Vision 2025 priorities. We have made, we made some progress prior to COVID on the achievement gap. We had increased, for example, for African-American students, we had increased from 9% for the students who started in the fall of 2016 to 19%, which was a huge increase for the students who began in 2017. We did see a little bit of a decline that may somewhat be related to COVID issues, but we are working diligently to make sure that we turn that back around. We did see very positive increase for our Hispanic and Latinx students. They now are achieving at the highest rate of all of our student population. So very pleased with that particular part of the achievement gap. One thing that I do want to talk about to make sure that it's, that you understand, part of that completion conversation and part of what we deal with is that most of our students are enrolled part-time, and over 70% of our students actually work full-time or part-time while they're coming to school. So you can see from this graph that that number of students who attend school full-time has actually decreased over the years. We now have about 36% of our student population actually enrolled full-time. And it takes a little bit longer than three or four years to complete the degree if you are not working full-time to do that. So just wanted to put a little bit of that in perspective. I also want to give you an update. I hope you can see these pictures well. We have a program at Forsyth Tech that I've mentioned to you before called College Lift, and this is a partnership with our Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. Students who are enrolled at Mineral Springs Middle School and now either Reynolds High School or Carver High School, start this program when they are in sixth grade. We enroll students each year, and we basically bring those students to our college on Saturday, and they receive supplemental instruction. These are all students who have applied for the program. The overwhelming majority are lower-income, first-generation students. And they come every Saturday, I think it's 27 Saturdays in the school year, for additional instruction on the weekends in math and English and science. And their parents come once a month to learn how to support their students to success. We now have students in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade who are in this program. They will stay with us from the sixth grade through the 12th grade. We will provide this additional support for them. And then we are partnering with our university partners, as well as offering scholarships internally here at Forsyth Tech for all of those students to receive scholarships when they graduate from high school to be able to continue into college. This is a unique program. We are breaking new ground in North Carolina, modeled after a program at the University of Southern California, and it's just a huge success. It is a game changer for these students. It is a way for us to truly tackle social mobility and eradicating poverty. And you'll be hearing more about this program from me as I come to give you these updates, but I wanted to let you know, we officially launched back in person on Saturday. Previously, last year, we had to do all of this work virtually, and it was very difficult, but we're back in person now. I also want to let you know, I mentioned that we were working diligently with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools on special project ideas for Carver High School. I'm very pleased to let you know that that partnership is going very well and that we are working hard to create new academies and new opportunities for learning at Carver in partnership with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools that will help all of the students at Carver have the ability to take career and college promise dual-enrolled classes with Forsyth Tech while they're still in high school. One of our goals in our strategic plan was to increase the number of students who take advantage of the free classes that they can take as high school students to earn college credit. It's called CCP, and we have significantly increased the number of students throughout both Stokes and Forsyth County who are taking these classes. We've increased by 5% in one year, and we now have about 1,024 Forsyth County high school students taking these credits. We're also working to create EMT opportunities for high school students to take EMT classes while they are in high school, for students to take aviation classes while they're in high school, and for students to take IT classes, all at Carver High School, college credit while they're still juniors and seniors, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. More information to come about that. That concludes my formal presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Comments or questions for Dr. Spriggs?
I would like to ask one question, Dr. Spriggs, since I've got you with us. We have a brand-new aviation center, and that one-minute presentation that you provided was really nice. It got you, it got my attention, and it's one of the few places in this whole area where you can learn to work on big aircraft engines and the type. But now, I'm certain you're going to have a few more people who are interested in that, because when we had the dedication, I had a lot of people there, and they were all looking at what was, what was going on. If they want to get information, what must they do to get it from you?
The best thing to do is, we have on our website, ForsythTech.edu, there is an opportunity for them to connect with us virtually, to get information about any program, and we will get them to the right place for aviation. Or they can certainly call our main number, which is 336-734-7200, and we will direct them to the right people that will be able to help them understand everything they need to know about aviation and how to get enrolled in those programs.
A follow-up question is, if they get all this information from you and they work on it diligently, does Forsyth Tech play a role in helping them find employment to put that education to good use?
That's a great question, and thank you so much for asking. Yes, we do. We are, we have a career center, and we are expanding our career center operations so that not... so that not only are we helping students understand what careers are right for them, but that we are connecting them to employment opportunities after they graduate and work-based learning opportunities while they are students. So we also, as you heard on Tuesday, we have a lot of great aviation industry partners. And so many of our partners are with us. Currently, we have one partner that has already hired three of our students to work while they are in school, and they're paying for their tuition.
Wow.
So, yes, we have lots of resources and lots of opportunities to connect students to the jobs that are available.
Commissioners, any further questions or comments?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Fleming Elamine.
Dr. Spriggs, thank you for the presentation. Please remind me, did you say there was a $45 per hour possibility for students graduating from the aviation academy?
Yes, that is exactly what I said. They are, they don't all start at $45 an hour, but they start well into the $20, $25 an hour and up. And there's an opportunity as an aviation mechanic to make up to $45 an hour. That's exactly right.
You're a class of a senior citizens.
You know, Commissioner Elamine, I'd be more than happy to investigate that for you.
That would make history. Fleming, Fleming Elamine flies high in all of our opinions anyway, so that would just be an added attraction. Further comments or questions?
Dr. Spriggs, Don Martin, how are you? Thanks for being with us again. Appreciate your recorded reports. I have, and I really want to congratulate you on the Aviation Technology Lab. That was, that was a great dedication, a great program, and getting off the ground. I have four short questions. Number one short question is, will students be there next fall in the Aviation Technology Lab?
Yes, actually, students are--
Our next spring, coming up in January.
Next spring, yes, sir. That's exactly what I was going to say. We have students who are currently taking general education courses, and they will start their aviation programming in January in our spring semester.
Good. Second short question, on the College Lift program, have you had, have your folks that worked with that talked at all with Crosby Scholars?
Yes.
Because that's a, I mean, they start in the sixth grade in Crosby Scholars, the same goal and outcome. Be great to dovetail that work.
Yes, sir, that, you're exactly right. And we, every one of our College Lift students is also a Crosby Scholar. On Saturday at our launch for this year, the Crosby Scholar team was there with us. They were signing them up for the Crosby Scholar Program, and they were talking to them and working with them to get that started. So, yes, we are working hand-in-hand with Crosby Scholars.
Great. The EMT program you mentioned, is it in the, is it happening, the course is happening yet, or just still in the planning? I didn't quite get that.
The courses at Carver High School for that are not happening yet. They are in the planning. I believe they will launch in the fall of next year.
And that will only be at Carver?
For right now, I don't think it will only be at Carver necessarily. So right now, to my understanding, the plans that we currently have with the school system, Commissioner, are that it will be, that the outreach to the high school will be at Carver High School, but we will also have a program at our Maisy Woodruff Center, just down the road from the airport, for all high school students.
Got it. And that was a follow-up. I still have my fourth question.
Yeah, I was just going to add that some of the school, there is a high school program for EMTs that I believe is in Walker Town and north. And so there's sort of a coordination dovetail of the programs that are operated through the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and then with Forsyth Tech. That's been, we've been working through that.
That's good, because I hope their curricula, if you will, is the same, because they're kind of tied in.
Yes, sir, we're working together with them. We are to make sure that it's all tied together and actually to make sure that we are providing jointly the best educational pathway for EMT, for the high school students.
Good. Thanks, Dudley, for that clarification. Last question, because that one was a follow-up. The fourth question really has to do with tuition programs generally. Is there, is there, and this is just, I may be mistaken, is there a state-funded free tuition program for Forsyth Tech? And I assume that's different than the College Lift program.
Yes, the College Lift program is totally different. That is, we are working in partnership with our university partners to have them provide the scholarships for those College Lift students. There is no free tuition program through the state. There has been through the stimulus funding that the federal government gave to the state, the governor's college commitment, or I'm sorry, long-lease commitment.
Okay, good.
And we were able to utilize some of that money to provide tuition-free and books-free for 2021 graduates this year.
So was that a large number or small number? Do you know off the top of your head?
It was a large number. We actually made a, I don't have the exact number, Commissioner, but I can tell you what, I can get that for you. But we were able to take that money along with the money that we have through the TRUEST gift, the three-year grant that we received from TRUEST, as well as using our federal Pell money and some of our internal foundation scholarship money to make Forsyth Tech's college commitment or guarantee for any 2021 high school student to be able to attend Forsyth Tech for free. So that was a college program, though. It was not funded solely by the state. And it was more than 1,000 students that we were able to, to help with that money.
Yeah, I was confusing also the TRUEST part. So, yeah, all that was, in fact, somebody actually asked me about that. And I said, well, I think so. I think there've been, and I really wasn't sure what they were asking, to be honest with you. That's why I asked.
Yes, sir. We were able, we were able to make that available to students, but we did that by bringing together all those different funding opportunities and then matching them appropriately to the students.
Sure. Yeah, money's money, and you just get the right pigeonhole. Thanks.
Further comments?
Yes, Chairman. Dr. Spriggs, I did all of the comments that have been previously made. I did want to circle back to some questions that we discussed previously before about the marketing for the Carver High School students with Dr. Carol Montague. And of those 1,024 students that are participating in the college school, or the college school program, how many of them are minority or come from the Carver High School? If you know that.
I do know that. So the number, the 1,024 that I gave you is all of Forsyth County students. Only seven of those students currently are at Carver High School, which is one of the data points that we looked at when Superintendent McManus and I got together to bring our teams together to do something significant at Carver High School. That was a very low number that neither of us were happy about. So that's one of the reasons why we are working together to do more at Carver High School. Marketing, my, our teams have put together, as I mentioned, a very comprehensive and large plan on all the different facets that I kind of hit on, how we can provide IT training there, college-level IT classes at Carver, how we can do aviation there, how we can do all these other opportunities. And our goal is that, starting next fall, fall of 2022, every Carver High School student who is eligible for taking a CCP class, a dual-enrolled college credit class, will take a college-level class. So we're getting there, and part of the reason why is because that number is so low for Carver High School.
Yeah. Thank you for that, and I appreciate it. Just, I have really high sentiments in terms of those minority students having access to that program. And hopefully, in your next report, the marketing, just getting everybody on board with relative to those things happening. I have spoken to very many people, many families in that community that don't know anything about the Aviation Center or any of the things that, the awesome things that's happening at Forsyth Tech. So if you can do some work around that, I know that you're a champion for that, so I trust you. Thank you.
We are, we are very much so. And we, we will be participating, I think it's either November 6th or 7th, with a school system event that they're having. To be, will be there, will be telling the story. But we are also working on an event for November 30th where we will bring students from the middle schools that feed into, that feed into Carver High School primarily here to Forsyth Tech. And during that event, we will tell them all about all these wonderful opportunities. I will also pledge to bring back with me more information about the disaggregated data for that 1,024 students. It does include our early and middle college student population, and I can break it down so that you see a holistic view of how many minority students are a part of that larger number for you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Spriggs.
Final comments, Dr. Spriggs?
One question, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Fleming Elamine jumped right in. There we go.
Final question, just a compliment to you for having a graduate from the EMT curriculum to speak to us during the luncheon. And I'm hoping that we'll get more EMTs out of Forsyth Tech in the future because there's a high, high, high demand in the county for that kind of qualification.
Yes. Yes, sir. We are working very closely with Forsyth County EMS and, and working to help with that. We have several different initiatives over the past year that we've put in place, including offering some significant support financially for students to enroll in that program, with a goal of enrolling 50 students in the paramedic program in the fall and 50 students in the spring. And so, yes, sir, we will continue to work hand-in-hand with Forsyth County. They've been, the EMS team helping us build the curriculum. We are piloting an advanced EMT program currently that is hand-in-hand, again, with the Forsyth County EMS, to make sure that what we are providing in instruction for those paramedics meets the needs of the county. So we have some work to do to really get that to where it needs to be, but I'm very confident that thanks to the hard work of both of our teams, we're getting there.
Thank you, Dr. Spriggs. Final comments?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Spriggs, for spending the afternoon with us. Very kind of you. The future looks bright. It just does. You've made some excellent comments.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your support very much.
You got it. Dr. Janet Spriggs, who is the top person at Forsyth Technical Community College. Coming up is the third and final discussion item we have, and just as a matter of introduction, we have something called ARPA, ARPA funds. That involves millions of dollars from the federal government to spend, but not necessarily as we please, because there are strings in some instances, and there are the federal government's ideas of where these should go and how and whom would be eligible for these funds. Now, having painted the picture in this pandemic era that we're in, I'll turn the meeting over to Dudley Watts, who will explain what the commissioners and what his staff is doing about distributing all of this money.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman, Board members, and guests. If I could get Lee Plunkett to come up and Ayesha Carter. You know Lee, Lee's our Assistant CFO. You normally hear from him around bond issuances and what have you, and he's also our treasurer. But another role that he has had over the last number of months, really, which began when we got the CRF money, if you remember it, and his, his transition to the ARPA money, is he's, he really has been kind of the lead of a steering group that we put together kind of across a number of different disciplines across the county, really to try to track this. You know, this, it's, it's been a challenge that you will hear from him around, around ensuring compliance and also working through budgets. So, so he's going to take care of some preliminary comments and kind of talk about how we got to where we are. And then Ayesha, our ARPA administrator, is going to present some recommendations to you, which I assume, we need to work through it, but we could put those in a reference, in a resolution format for the board's consideration in this next cycle of meetings. So without further ado, alternative, Lee.
Thank you, Dudley. Good afternoon, Board. So I want to go through a quick little background refresher on the American Rescue Plan Act and the funding. So it was signed into law by the President on March 11th of this year, and that was $350 billion for eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments, of which Forsyth County gets $74.3 million. We will receive it in two equal, equally split tranches. We've already received the first back in May for $37.1 million. And they say within 12 months, we'll receive the second tranche of the equal amount. Just for a reminder, the expenditure period, the expenditures have to be incurred through December 31st of 2024, so roughly three years, but totally expended by December 31st, 2026. And there are definitely quite a few reporting requirements. The first is a quarterly project expenditure report, and then there's annual reporting requirements that include issues like performance measurement and a lot more of a narrative look at what we're doing with the funds. So the purpose, according to the U.S. Treasury, is to provide a substantial infusion of resources to meet pandemic response needs and rebuild a stronger, more equitable economy as a country recovers. The Treasury guidance provides five general areas of eligible uses. The first is that to address public health issues stemming from the pandemic. The next is to address negative economic impacts from the pandemic. The third is premium pay for essential workers. Fourth is revenue loss, which is, takes a look at the loss of public sector revenue and allows us to put those towards general government services. And then investments in infrastructure, specifically water, sewer, broadband. You guys have already taken action on premium pay and revenue loss, and so the rest of the projects are going to be looking at the other three areas. All the, all, all of these with the additional focus on serving the disproportionately impacted communities. So many of us continue to comb through all of the guidance that's been published. And the School of Government is finishing up some outstanding training classes that a lot of us have been through, and that they've helped us map out the next administrative steps, the way we like to look at it. There's actually, the last class is going on right now, and they have been extremely, extremely helpful. And one area they've, they've helped us with is clarifying how the federal guidance and the state law overlap. So the guidance was issued by the School of Government that ARPA uses must also meet North Carolina law. So we've got a little, oh, excuse me, we have a little chart there. You can see there's the eligibility under ARPA, and there's eligibility under state law. And where those two come together is where we can spend our funds. And so it may be eligible under ARPA, but it may not be eligible under state law. So that's an additional level of review that we've had to go through. And that opinion is based on the emoluments clause. So all expenditures of public funds must be used for public purposes only, and no private entity may receive emoluments or privileges unless a public service is provided in return. So that's about as far as my legal expertise goes in the matter. So if you do have any more questions on this subject, I'll have to ask our attorney, Gordon, to answer any of those questions.
Could I ask you a question before you continue?
Absolutely.
We were given the impression that the funds will be available for profit and nonprofit entities initially from the federal guidelines. So this state requirement came about after that?
I don't know that it necessarily came about after. It was just once the guidance came out and the School of Government and others were able to look at what it actually saying you can do. We had to set it aside and say, okay, here's what we can do. And then the School of Government says, well, there's some things that you might not be able to do because of state law. And so they hashed it out, and over time, they've come up with some guidance that says that we should probably stick within state law to stay legal. They're also, the School of Government is also extremely helpful in unpacking our compliance requirements. So the scope of compliance is quite large and complicated. There are a lot of strings attached to this funding. And we're working through an internal audit right now with the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office on our CRF dollars, and it's eye-opening, to say the least. And the ARPA program is five times larger. So, you know, the award terms that when we accepted the funding require compliance with multiple federal regulations and guidance. The uniform guidance you see there is a big one that we're working through. There's an OMB compliance supplement. I pulled that open, and it was 1,700 pages. So that's a fun one to go through. And then there's the Treasury interim final rule. And so this is, I want to make a point here, you know, there's not a final rule yet. However, the Treasury did issue a statement that any decision that a government makes while under the interim final rule will stand, even if there's a change to the final rule later. So that's something to keep in mind as we move forward. So that's something to keep in mind as we move forward. There's a frequently asked questions, and then there's a compliance guide that we've relied on heavily. So because of all this, we're working on bringing updated policies and procedures for your adoption, and the hope is to create a proper compliance environment, and that's to mitigate the risk of noncompliance and then ultimately to avoid any recruitment of So here are some examples of the compliance responsibilities of the county. I'm listing them here because hopefully the policy package that we'll bring to you is going to address most of these issues, and it's mainly just pulling it all together with some federal language, and so that we'll be in compliance. And so it has to do with some eligibility allowable activities and costs, how we manage the cash, how we manage equipment and real property purchases, procurement, reporting. Anyone that expends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year has to go through a single audit, civil rights, conflicts of interest, and then subrecipient monitoring. So this last point of compliance leads up to our specific challenges, as what Ayesha will present today and starting going through the applications that have been received. So subrecipient monitoring is triggered when the subawards go to external entities like private nonprofits. So the state law implies that you can't grant or donate funds to support operational or capital needs, but it does say you can contract undertake a program or activity that the county has statutory authority to perform. So we have to be careful in how we look at that going forward. And then the Treasury requires us to develop written policies and procedures for the subrecipient monitoring, and that's for their reporting, our risk assessment, and then hopefully that will be a part of the package of policies that, again, is going to be brought before you all soon. And we will need to have those in place before any subawards are made to remain in compliance and reduce our risk. The subaward process that's listed here, this is, a form of this will kick in after you, the board, decide to move forward with any of the applications. And so the first step is to take a look at the application, the project, and determine, are they a subrecipient or contractor? So I will say that most of them that are in there now are going to be subrecipients, and that's what kicks in, all the monitoring and the compliance issues. We'll probably do a final risk assessment. So we did do a preliminary risk assessment during the application process. We're going to take one additional look at the risk of noncompliance, because they ask us to get financial policies in place for even the organizations that are going to receive funding. So as we're bringing policies to you all to adopt, we're going to be looking at what policies and procedures each of these organizations have in place as well. And then there'll be a formation and issuance of the subaward agreement, and then, again, the monitoring after the award has been given. That was a lot. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, and if not, I can.
Comments or questions?
Just one quick question, please.
Yes, sir.
Could you just explain in simple terms what a risk assessment is, please?
Sure. A risk assessment is looking at how risky will it be to give a certain organization money? Will they be able to comply with federal guidance? So one example might be, they've never handled federal funding before, so do they know how to use the funds and follow federal procurement laws when they're purchasing goods and services? Can they follow the way the uniform guidance has laid that out? Have there been any audit findings historically for this organization that may throw red flags? Things like that, mainly financial, to make sure they can handle the funds.
Any questions or comments?
Final question.
Yes, sir.
I know we have to report back to the Federal Treasury Department. Are the state requirements also we have to report back to?
No.
State reports, I suppose.
That's a good question. So we were the direct recipient from the United States Treasury, so we report directly back to them.
Okay.
Over to Ayesha. And by the way, she has been fantastic. I'm so glad she's on board.
By the way, I think Tony McDaniel would have a question. Don't go away.
Oh, that's okay, Chairman. I do have a question, but I think our county manager, Dudley, could help me with this. So this information, we discussed about providing it online, and even though I know that it's a public meeting that we're having right now, I went to the website today just to find out if it was available, and it's not yet. So is that going to happen?
It is going to happen Friday, tomorrow. I will send you the link once it's up.
Fair enough, thank you.
We were trying to get the sale, the status and everything aligned right before we put it out there for people who have hard time seeing.
Okay, thank you.
And my name is Ayesha Carter, for the record. Met everybody, how y'all doing? All right. So I want to talk to you guys about the Forsyth County ARPA budget process and where we are. In launching the Forsyth County ARPA budget process, at the request of Board of Commissioners, a public application process was developed, a public input survey was launched early July, an online application was developed via Forsyth County Neighborly Software, and an ARPA administrator was hired, who am I, August 30th, to implement the program. The application process closed August 27th at 5:00 p.m., and at the closing, we had a hundred and seventy-six applications. Of the one hundred and seventy-six, twenty-three were county department applications, and a hundred and fifty-three were external applications. Of the total ARPA funding awarded to Forsyth County, we have forty-eight point eight remaining to be allocated after the Forsyth County revenue loss and Forsyth County Human Resource Premium Pay was approved. For the ARPA, the ARPA budget process, an ARPA steering committee was created to provide support, guidance, and oversight for the ARPA progress. From the steering committee, a staff review subcommittee was created. County staff from multiple departments were selected to review each application in teams of three for allowable use determining if applications met federal ARPA guidance. Applications were ranked and their overall impact determined. Those applicants who were determined allowable were then reviewed for risk of noncompliance and a high or low risk of noncompliance was determined. Within the ARPA process, Forsyth County staff continued to update the county commissioners on ARPA status and will continue to do so.
Excuse me, please, Ayesha. There was a slide that you somewhat omitted in your presentation that talks about the budget process, board adopted goal. Go back two slides, please.
Two slides.
It's that one. I didn't hear your comment on that.
Okay, yes, I did put that in my notes. Okay, for the ARPA budget process, the board did adopt a goal of eighty percent of funds, and that eighty percent of funds available will reach the most marginalized populations. The county commissioners board encouraged applicants to focus on projects and programs within qualified census tracts with the hope that eighty percent of those funds will reach the county's most marginalized populations. To help organize applications and information, Forsyth County staff read each application, description, requests, and placed them in subinitiatives. Here's a list of the subinitiatives and the number of applications that fell in them.
Ayesha, may I ask a question? Are we, Dudley, if you need to help, that's fine, too. Are we still working alongside the city of Winston-Salem and the school board?
We are. I'll mention that later.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, listen.
Okay, for the non-allowable ARPA uses, there were nineteen applications. Staff determined that these applications did not meet ARPA guidance. Again, applications were reviewed by teams of three of selected allowable uses and determined not to meet guidance in those areas. Applications were later reviewed for all non-selected allowable uses, just to make sure we didn't miss anything, and those applications were deemed unallowable on the federal guidance. The next section is business grants. There were eighteen applications. These applications passed the initial allowable use review, but were determined non-allowable based on NC law. The emoluments clause states that public funds cannot be given to a private entity unless a public service is provided in return. For broadband infrastructure, there were two applications that passed the initial allowable use review on the federal ARPA guidance, but were determined non-allowable based on NC law. Current NC statute does not allow local governments to invest in broadband infrastructure. For the water and sewer infrastructure, there were five applications. Four of the five applicants are general economic development, and per the SLFRF frequently asked questions, general economic development is not allowable. And I'll let Gordon speak on that if he, if you have any questions in regards to that. And then workforce development, oh, the one of the five that did pass was the Highway sixty-five water line, and that will be on an agenda item in the future. Next, we have workforce development, education attainment. There were thirty-three applications, and those applications have been provided to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Forsyth Tech for currency review. So they do have those.
So, Ayesha, I do have a quick question, and this is for Gordon, if he can help. Going back to the broadband infrastructure, so if, what is the difference, and it could be a difference, because I know that there was some COVID funding that the school board received to provide technical modems for students to use, and they also pay for broadband services. So I don't, really can't get into the intricacies of the applications, but would that create a denial from the county because of that? Or I'm just kind of confused.
So the problem here is that there is a North Carolina state statute, 153A-459, which really restricts the ability of local governments, including counties, from providing broadband services. Part of it is we can't operate our own broadband system, but it also says we can't fund any broadband system unless we use general unrestricted funding, and ARPA funding is restricted. And so even though federally they say we can use it, the state law won't let us use it, and the NCAACC has been lobbying the General Assembly for many years to allow freer use of county funds for broadband, but that has been turned down. And so that's some background. To answer your question, the applications that I've seen were about expanding broadband, which we can't do. Now, what you referred to in the school system about hotspots or equipment, that's probably not really broadband, that's probably paying for a person to have access to it. So that would likely be different, but I don't believe we received any applications like that.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful.
Any other questions about that?
One quick question, please, Ayesha, and then I'll be quiet, I hope. Under workforce development and educational attainment.
Yes.
I know that PTRC received, you know, a substantial amount of money for workforce development. Are we coordinating anything with them in terms of these applications or is it a separate process completely?
I think we should, if we're not. Dudley, I'll let you speak on that one.
Yeah. We sent the ones that we'd received to the schools and to Forsyth Tech, and so we're doing a concurrency review with them now. I mean, we're in the early stages of it, but we'll pull for the ones that PTRC has, to the extent they got money. I believe PTRC was a fairly significant application, but that might have been in a different arena.
I serve on the board for PTRC. It was a substantial amount that's in the budget right now that they received.
They both, they received some dollars, but they've also requested us some additional dollars from them, so there will be a lot of coordination with PTRC.
Okay. All right.
Right. All right, and I want to also talk about staff recommendations, starting with affordable housing. For all the affordable housing applications, Forsyth County is recommending to refer them to the city of Winston-Salem and local municipalities, and I'll just go over a couple, all of them. Case 10787, which is MTB3 properties, they are requesting funding for development of current underutilized block of land in the East Winston community. The request would develop the site at 310 Martin Luther King Drive, named Ram's Point, for affordable housing, market rate housing, as well as offer retail spaces at the bottom of the structure. They are asking for the seven hundred K to add, for equity, basically, for the project, just to make sure that they have enough equity in investments for the long term for their The next affordable housing one is applicant 10778, PCCC. They're requesting two point eight three million. The request is for six hundred thousand will be used to pay back a pre-development loan, which the county funded, towards the property, and then two point two three will go towards development costs and the cost to set up a loan program. For the past, or for four years, PCCI and Shalom Project and Third Wave Housing have been working together to replace what has been an eyesore and safety issue for the Peters Creek Corridor, which was a budget end at Academy. They will want a deed restriction on the land use to make sure that some of those units are used for affordable housing, so a thirty-year deed restriction. And again, the recommendation here is to refer all affordable housing projects to the city of Winston-Salem and local municipalities. Next, we have 10821, Third Wave Developer Ivy Court. They are requesting three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to create a loan program for at least six home buyers to buy homes in Ivy Court, which is a forty-two-home new construction townhouse community in a historically redlined Slate Avenue neighborhood. The request is therefore second soft loans, a second, soft second mortgage loans, fifty thousand dollars each, and again, referring to the city of Winston-Salem and local municipalities.
I'm just curious, Ayesha, what is a soft second mortgage?
It's similar to what the county do here with the IDA program, IDA Home Program. It's just a second, a second, a second loan on the house at zero percent interest for a period of time. Next, we have 10780, which is Third Wave Housing. The request is for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and similar to the other one, it is for at least three home buyers to buy homes in Northeast Village, a nine-home new construction cottage court community in a historically redlined neighborhood of Ogden Station. The request is for three soft second loans at fifty thousand each and administration fees of ten K. The recommendation is to refer all affordable housing projects to the city of Winston-Salem and local municipalities. Next, we have applicant 10806, South Creek Development, Pegram Landing Two. They're requesting two million dollars, and the proposal is for a sixty-unit multifamily affordable housing development located in Lewisville, North Carolina. The sixty units will be targeted to families making thirty percent, fifty, sixty, and eighty percent of the area median income, qualifying the development as affordable housing. They're requesting funds to cover the increase in construction costs. And the recommendation here, again, is refer all affordable housing to the city of Winston-Salem and local municipalities. Next, we have applicant 10682, Stone Terrace Infrastructure Support. They're requesting six hundred and nine thousand dollars. Habitat is seeking ARPA funding to provide capital assistance to complete the road network within Stone Terrace, to complete the build-out of the neighborhood and provide much-needed affordable home ownership in Forsyth County. Based on bids, they received the cost to complete the engineering, site testing, permits, construction management, and construction of the road system is six hundred and nine thousand dollars. Recommendation here is to refer affordable housing to the city of Winston-Salem and local And applicant 10673 is Yujima, CDC, Inc. They're requesting one point five million. They're requesting $1.5 million funding to construct 10 duplex units, five buildings in the City View Community of Winston-Salem, which is in Census Track 17. The project is Phase 2, completion of four, possibly five, two bare room duplexes, for a total of eight to 10 units of housing for the Manuel Retirement Village located in the City View neighborhood of Winston-Salem. Recommendation is to refer affordable housing projects to the City of Winston-Salem and local municipalities.
Excuse me, Ayesha, I said I wouldn't ask another question, but I, I was in error. So we refer these projects to the City of Winston-Salem, then what happens?
That is a great question. Dudley, would you like to take that?
So really what you're saying, if, if we include this in a, in a resolution, is that we're just, that we believe that the affordable housing sort of arena really ought to be handled by the municipalities with their ARPA dollars and that it's really outside the county's wheelhouse. And so that's, that's really what you're communicating to them. So we would, we would refer them both to the leadership of the, of the city or municipality, and then also to the applicant. And so really, you're just making a policy statement saying that arena is really not, is not ours.
Can I ask a question? Ayesha, have you spoken with the, your counterpart in the city? Because the city's, to my knowledge, has not done any sort of grant program. So if you've talked to them, do they see, I'm assuming they see that affordable housing is in their wheelhouse and that that's something that they're likely to support with their funds and that they kind of agree with that?
I have, yeah, I, I have referred it directly to Lee Garrity. They have already set aside 10 million of their dollars, I believe, for affordable housing. And so, you know, Lee has also said he doesn't really appreciate me recommending referring these to him. He's been real clear about that. But they are aware of all of these projects and they have a structure, kind of. They've made a decision. Am I right about the 10 million that the city had included?
I, I don't know that, but there in, in the proposed state budget, there was 10 million for affordable housing for Winston-Salem.
Okay, well, this is in addition. They have set aside some of the ARPA funds that they have for affordable housing. And then, you know, they're a HUD entitlement community as well. And so, I mean, it's really clearly their wheelhouse. Louisville maybe not as much, just because they've not, I mean, they're more of a defensive incorporation, not a full-service municipality, and really, I don't think have done much with affordable housing at all. And I think our statement to a Louisville would be, you know, you'll need, you know, if, if you're not interested, we're not interested. I guess would be the, be the statement. But really, to answer your question, we're really just making, if, if you go along with this recommendation, it's really more of a policy statement saying that, you know, particularly the construction, you know, the bricks and mortar. We're involved in affordable housing in lots of ways through our Housing and Economic Development Department, but it's always been more around leveraging financing from other sources, being a convener in that process. And then obviously, our wheelhouse has really clearly been the, the first time homeowner, the, you know, the, the IDA program, individual development account, really helping empower people to set aside money to go buy a home, the financial literacy, the, and all of that. And so, and that, we've been partners with the city on that, but that's been our wheelhouse. But we can certainly do something different here, but that's what this would say.
Mr. Manager, the city's ARPA plan states that their future phases could include $20 million for housing projects, land acquisition, and renovation development.
I raise a question for a reason, and maybe our attorney can help me out on this. In the federal guidelines, I recall one of those two suggestions was affordable housing to use those dollars for. But now we're sort of at a pastor buck position. So there, there might be a little confusion in the broader community about that.
Yeah.
And I was going to say, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to go ahead and bring this to you kind of early on in the process. You know, so we grabbed that subcategory really for this purpose. If, if we want to enter into that arena, then we just need to know, you know, we're really developing policy at this point before you even talk about this.
Okay, I've got sort of two comments or questions. One, one is related to, I think there's, I think maybe the next one coming up is a Habitat request. And Habitat is expanding some area, maybe, is there one right behind this coming up?
No, the Habitat one was that Stone Terrace infrastructure one.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, and I assume all of these are within the city limits and that basically none, I, I think I remember talking to Habitat, some, they were looking at a place in the county to do some county Habitat houses. And I'm just curious if that's, because that's sort of a different arena. I mean, involvement, involvement in Habitat is not quite the same as, I mean, yes, it is. They have a process in affordable housing, but it's a different type process. And if they were going to expand into the county as a plan in the next three years, then that might be one that's a little different in terms of consideration, I think. It might be.
There's certainly not a municipality to refer it to at that point.
Yeah, which, which, and, and they have requested, I, I can't, I can't remember the exact comments, but I mean, that would be worth knowing whether they plan to expand into the county. Because then that would put that as a sort of a project I think might, we might want to consider. The second comment I was going to make is the arenas we have been involved in, which was the IDA grant programs, the trainings, the first time home buyers and that kind of stuff. We don't have a proposal from ourselves or from anyone else to do more in that arena, I don't think.
I think we do. Those are in some of those other categories, because really the affordable, this category was really the bricks and mortar support for, for that. So I'll have to, you know, we haven't dove completely in that category yet, but I think you'll, you'll see under some of the other categories, I think, more assistance in capacity building, I think.
Would it be too much to ask to, to contact the Habitat folks and ask them if they have plans for expansion into the county, for example?
I will do that.
Know that.
All right.
And is it also fair to assume that probably all of these applicants have made some kind of inquiry to the city? Is that fair to assume?
I don't think that's fair to assume. We actually did ask in the application, did they apply for other funds? And some people had, said that they had plans to apply, and some of them said no. So I ain't going to assume that everybody reached out, but some of them may have. I can go look and see which ones did.
Yeah, and I don't think the city has, they have not put a formal application process out. And so they are, as, as I understand of yet, I specifically asked Lee when we were talking if he was aware of all these projects. And he, and he was aware of every one of them.
Oh, he was aware of every one? I got it, okay, that's, okay, I'm good.
Hopefully, the final question, Ayesha. Mr. Chairman, if I may. I think there's going to be some confusion in the community about the state regulations versus federal. Somehow, we got to get the word out about that requirement from the state in a very simple fashion. So they won't feel like we're sort of changing the rules in midstream. Because many of them were not aware of the state regulations when they applied, I don't believe. So somehow, let's come up with an instrument to sort of inform them of that requirement. They will captivate by, basically. Let's just be honest with the public.
There are a couple UNC School of Government articles that I could post on our Forsyth County website.
Okay.
So they can refer to that.
And you, you sent them.
I did send that out to all the individuals that were deemed ineligible.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
It's technical and it's a lot of information. I mean, it was, I've had a number of phone calls, and I'm sure y'all have had some of the calls as well. And, and, you know, some of the comments were, it really is hard to find, you know, this greatly narrow, you know, the full analysis greatly narrowed the eligibility piece, and that's true. I mean, it, you know, we apologize. But we are still getting additional guidance that's coming, coming through that as we, as we try to get these considered. And so, but that's, you know, I think I was in one of those meetings and I said, you know, this is money that's coming from the federal government. It's not going to be easy. And so I think part of our challenge is going to be to help, particularly some of the smaller nonprofits, with other capacity building things to help them be a better grant applicant out in the future. And maybe there's, you know, things we can do on the capacity building side that can help them be successful. And so that's what we are hoping.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to move on to, oh, did I break the thing? Move on to the gun violence and crime prevention recommendations, starting with applicant 10572, which is Forsyth County Sheriff's Department. They're requesting $3.8 million for three-year funding for a juvenile intervention and investigation team, also known as JIT. It is comprised of a total of eight sworn officers, one sergeant, a corporal, six deputies or detectives, and one non-s sworn senior office assistant. The team will be dedicated to filling the enforcement, investigative, and intervention gap for youth involved in gang-related violence, as well as addressing increased youth gun violence in Forsyth County. Forsyth County's decision or recommendation, our decision is pending Forsyth County Sheriff's Department formalizing an interlocal agreement with the City of Winston-Salem Police Department and Kernersville Police Department. And the funding level will be determined in the interlocal agreement.
Ayesha, you don't have to, oh, I said I would not say that.
I was expecting more from you.
I apologize again.
Okay.
But the process of getting this interlocal agreement off the ground, you know, the status of that?
So I can reach out to, what's my guy name?
We have a whole bunch of them in the back of the room, actually. And they all have guns. I would probably, the biggest gun back there is, well, the sheriff. I'm sorry, I was, I looked over at Rocky, so you have the sheriff and chief deputy back there.
Be careful what you say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll definitely reach out to one of those individuals and see how we can get that interlocal agreement going.
Yeah. So we, we conveyed the, the staff recommendation to the sheriff and chief deputy. They actually provided a, you know, a memo that essentially talked to that effort. I know this is probably in the early stages of it, but I'll defer to the sheriff or chief deputy on that.
I have a question, Chairman. Ayesha, so with the gun and gang violence prevention, why isn't this under the Cure, working alongside the Cure Violence program?
Great question. Should we consider doing that?
Yeah, the Cure Violence model is really exclusive of law enforcement. I'll look to Chantel to comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Cure Violence does not include enforcement. It is strictly prevention. It's non-law enforcement intervention. It's led by the community. It's really two separate things. But certainly, you know, law enforcement needs to support the Cure Violence model if that is something recommended for our community.
I will make just one comment. I have heard from the chief deputy some information about the JIT program, which I did ask clarification. It is J I T, not J I I T.
I think it's J I I T.
I thought it was. So what's, what's the added I? Okay, thanks. But anyway, I did learn about sort of the mechanics of the program. And, and basically, I think it, they're already experimenting with a small group now, seem to have some preliminary success that's kind of identifiable. I like things you can kind of measure. And, and it seems from a prototype to have it be in the right direction and making a difference. And I'd made a comment about the later budget amendment issue that we have coming up on our briefing agenda, that I confused the two, thought they were one and the same. They're not. And, but I think it, it does show promise. And so I, I appreciate that initiative and the, and the proposal itself. And I would think that, that the City of Winston-Salem and Kernersville would be more than happy to participate, I assume, reaching out to them. We have someone standing. Come on up front so you can be heard and seen. I can't see that far back, so.
Thank you, Commissioners. I may be able to answer a few questions. I'm Major Mark Elliott over the Enforcement Bureau at the Sheriff's Office. I have been in conversation with one of the Assistant Chiefs with Winston-Salem Police Department. We are in collaboration with them with their gang unit and street crimes unit, which will also be in collaboration with this JIT team. Part of that will be training for our staff in regards to gang recognition, as well as other community resources to defer some of our efforts. So it doesn't always have to be a prosecutorial thing. We want to do an investigative and intervention tool. So if we can stop it at the head before it even gets to the part where it becomes criminal, that's what this team is, is designed to do. Additionally, if it does come to where we have to take it to a criminal aspect and investigate, that team would do that as well. But they would work in partnership with other community resources to do an intervention tactic, trying to identify some of our high-risk individuals in the community.
I would think that you already have a pretty good idea who they are. You just can't get to them at, under the current situations. Is that right?
Well, currently, right now, Commissioners, we, we have a temporary team that we've tried, done a trial basis with four deputies right now. And they've done very well at stopping some of the violence that is going on in our community by collaborating with Winston-Salem and Kernersville, as well as the school system, as well as other community resources. We've stopped several assaults that could have occurred. They've been able to identify through intelligence gathering information, guns on our campuses, and they've been able to intervene before a crime had occurred that caused injury. So it's, it's been very successful so far. And I think by funding this, it's going to just take off. It really will. I really feel strong about that.
And it's able to, and I think one of the, another great success is able to actually get some folks who have been gang members to get out.
Correct.
And I, I think that part is, and that is something you can measure, and it's really important. It provides a pathway, I think, to, to some folks who feel like they're trapped.
And this unit would have training in that regard, is how, how can we deter and, and get them out of the, the temptation of going into a gang and, and providing other resources in our community that would get them on the right track. So yes, sir, that's why there would be an intervention team.
You're doing this on the local level, but it's a statewide, probably a South Region problem as well. Would this funding help establish communications with folks that you really want to talk to?
Yeah, I think this would be a pilot program. The sheriff's idea is to really get this to take off. And, and having the support from the community as well as all the stakeholders, this could be a, something that the entire state could model after by the success of this unit.
Additional questions or comments?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I think one small example of this was the success that you had from the police department to identify handgun at one of the schools. That kind of cooperation is really needed.
Yes, sir.
And whatever we can do to remove guys from our schools, you know, I support 100%.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's part of our real-time intelligence centers that have been collaborating with our JIT team already. Some of the detectives that have been working in collaboration with Winston and Kernersville. That intelligence gathering and having a centralized location for that intelligence to, to be disseminated and vetted, that's been very important in this, in that regard.
You've provided a real comfort level just by what you said. Because this, I don't have to say it out loud, but the fact is, we've got almost a pandemic of shootings going on. And you're the guys who are on the front line.
They're working very hard, and they're working very closely with all the municipalities right now, as well as all of our stakeholders.
I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're there.
Thank you.
Chairman, yeah, I have a few comments. Major Dudley, thank you all for being here today. And we definitely appreciate all the service that you do to provide to protect our citizens out there in Forsyth County. However, any thought, because again, we have a active Cure Violence assessment that's transpiring right now. And I hate for all of that work to go to naught. And I say that because we don't want to use, well, I don't want to support our dollars for enforcement. And I hear your heart. I know that our sheriff and the sheriff's department really want to be active participants in solving this thing in gun and gang violence. in solving this thing in gun and gang violence. So how, I guess I have to ask Chantel and your departments, how is the assessment going to assist with the JIT team?
So I'll answer a little bit more about Cure Violence, because what Major Elliott said kind of helped me connect the dots. So the intervention piece is what we're hoping Cure Violence does, that the community tackles the issue, the community reaches out to the high-risk individuals, connect them with resources, talk to them about not entering gangs, other options, as well as our juvenile crime prevention programs that this board funds almost a million dollars per year. So Cure Violence Assessment, which we're waiting on the results, really is for the intervention piece for the community, driven by the community to have different types of results.
Is it fair to assume that during the Cure Violence assessment, that, I mean, I'm kind of curious, who, they're not here, I don't think, are they? Are they just doing this, I mean, I'm curious who they're talking to? And for example, have they spoken with the sheriff's department?
Well, the sheriff's office is on the steering committee, but has not attended any meetings. And so they would love to speak with the sheriff's office. But Cure Violence is not a law enforcement tactic at all. But they are speaking with certainly, you know, the judicial system and the school system. Superintendent McManus is part of the steering committee and does attend, you know, our elected officials. And Winston-Salem PD has been very engaged in others. But they are also talking to community organizations, faith-based leaders. They did the Cure Violence 101 sessions with lots of people that attended. And now what we're doing is, they have identified the hotspot, which isn't the right term, but the hotspot areas, and will now be reaching out to organizations, individuals, faith-based leaders that work in those communities to figure out what they currently are doing, so that we can then identify who could potentially be, community outreach workers, violence interrupters. And certainly, we're continuing to, that needs to complement existing programming or help us identify if new programs are needed. But what we've heard from our counterparts across the straight, across the state that has implemented Cure Violence or is in the process of doing so, is that you really don't know what resources you truly need until the outreach workers and the violence interrupters are talking to people and figuring out where the gaps are. So like in Durham County, they have a really strong partnership with their community college, because what they're finding out is that there needs to be a lot of educational needs. In some other communities, it's more mental health. And so we already have, as you know, a lot of programming through juvenile crime prevention council, but we're certainly always evaluating whether they're successful, whether we need to do something different. The assessment right now has been virtual. Once they talk to the key stakeholders, which they're doing over the next two weeks, then they are coming on-site to go into the neighborhood so they can talk to people themselves. These are individuals from Cure Violence. One of their leads spent 15 years in prison. He lived this life. He knows what to look for. He knows the questions to ask. He can dig into who's really doing the work, who's really not. And so we're looking for a community-based intervention program led by the community to change community outcomes.
And that's an introduction to Sheriff Bobby Kimbrough.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I really appreciate you all giving us opportunity. And thank you, Dr. Martin, for the kind words. I just wanted to clear up something. Myself and Chief Jonah were on the Cure Violence meeting, the last one that they had with Didi Adams, Chief Penn, and a few other people. We were present on the call. One of the things about the call, why we hadn't been back when they made the statement that they don't share information with law enforcement. We have reached out to Greensboro Police Department. I've spoken with the police chief and the places they are operating in. And the theme is the same, is that they don't share information with law enforcement. I could give you some examples that you can call next door and verify. I have no problems working with no one. But if we're going to work together, you have to have a sharing of information, because there's information that the interceptors may get, that may need law enforcement to intervene, to investigate. You can't collect information and not share with law enforcement, because you have no idea how to vet it. You have no systems to know whether information is going to take you or who is going to affect. I'm all for working with anybody. But as we were talking earlier, the intervention part of it is what we're doing, getting out into the community, offering these young men a pathway out of the gangs. Some of the successes that we've had with the makeshift unit that we have created, we've had men leave from some of the gangs. I got a call yesterday of two gang members. They want to talk about it. Our guys are out there in the community talking with people. And the people that you're talking about, interceptors, that's great. I get the concept behind that. I get that. But what I know for a fact is that you got to have several pieces to this solution. Cure Violence is not the solution.
I agree.
It's one piece of the solution. And what I'm saying is the JIT team is a part of the solution. That's all I'm asking. That's all I just wanted to share with you. We were at the meeting on the Zoom call, myself, my chief deputy. As a matter of fact, when he misspoke and said they had this success in Greensboro, no violence, and then he backed up and said, oh, I mean, the block or two that we're working on. I was a part of that conversation while listening to it, looking at it. So we welcome any solutions. We welcome being a part of it. We just want to be a part of it.
So Sheriff Kimbrough, for me, with all the work and all of the commitment that we put into Cure Violence, I need that to work, for this JIT team to work. So it's not that the sheriff's department can do it alone. You can't do it alone. Cure Violence can't do it alone. But somebody has, because it's happening in our communities.
Exactly.
So we're together with that now. Thank you.
No, no, I'm sorry. I interrupted. I just wanted to add, as I think about, I mean, I get the dichotomy between law enforcement and providing intervention. I do get your point about sharing information. There's obviously some life safety issues that get involved in that, and that's important. But as I think about, one of the key issue in all these, because I have read these, particularly this group of grants over, I appreciate Ayesha sending them to me. And one of the real problems is identifying who needs intervention with. Who is, who are the people? You know, I mean, everybody doesn't go around with, you know, wearing their T-shirts. There are some colors and things, I know that. But what I'm saying is, it's identifying those who need help and then connecting them. And I think in schools, because this is a big issue in schools, there's a, that becomes sometimes a congregation point. And we've seen the tragedy of the worst of that congregation point in the Matt Tabor case. So I'm sort of thinking, I'm going to put sort of my school hat thinking on and say, I probably am not interested in having, for example, an, what's a Cure Violence person called?
Violence interrupter.
Interrupter. I'm probably not trying, interested in trying to have these, know these, getting interrupters into schools when we already have an avenue through the contractual avenue with the sheriff's department that some of these identifications looks like would be very effective in schools. Because that's where you have a large number of youth and some of these gang indicators to look for with people that are basically, do not, they're not in uniform, they're not, you know, you don't know who they are. And they're young, and they fit into that, into a large, into a group of students, into a student body. And they're able to do some work and some identification. And with a school hat on, I'd rather have them than the violence interrupter that I kind of don't have any kind of agreement or contract or relationship with, because that's bringing into a fairly restricted, protected environment. So I do, there's some real balance, I think, in, as this plays out, that would have to, would work out. But I do appreciate the thinking on the JIT team and what I think it has some potential, because you've got to identify the people before you can even do anything. Everybody does this, are you in a gang? Well, no, I'm not. Well, you don't know if I'm in a gang or not.
Exactly.
I could hide it, you know, for example. But, so I see that being as kind of an issue. So I think we'll be, I'll be real interested in the Cure Violence report and what their assessment is and what they say. Important.
So Sheriff Kimbrough, one more thing, and I will be quiet after this. With this JIT team, you're out there with the enforcement, investigation, intervention. And then you talk about how you're connecting to those individuals to come out of those gangs. You're going to need that Cure Violence assessment so that you'll know, we will know, or you will know, we will know, which entities in the community that these individuals need to have support from in the future.
I totally agree with that.
Because I didn't know, I don't know what you're, in your mind, what your, what your program was going to do after the enforcement.
So you're talking about the JIT?
The JIT team.
So basically, the JIT team has identified some people that we have actually brought over to the YMCA that's now in the mentoring program. So the JIT team is not a program that's going out there arresting. That's why I say that collaboration, cooperation, I would love to have cooperation with the Cure Violence. But if you have an organization that's saying they're not going to share information with the police department, I'll give you one example. Verified, they're working in Greensboro. They don't share information. They confiscated guns from a person in the community. Those guns were never turned into the police department. When they asked where the guns, one of the members had the guns at home. It's information that has to be shared. You cannot have an organization operating in our community not sharing information. Because one, you have no way of vetting the information. We have systems in place that can vet information. They do not. And you, there is no better gather of information than what we have now. We have people working, we are vetting information, social media. And it has to be a collaboration. And I'm not opposed to Cure Violence. I'm not. I would love to work with them, but it has to be a sharing of information and cooperation. It's the only way, together.
Well, I'm hopeful in the next couple of weeks, and I won't take up too much more time with this, the next couple of weeks, that you guys will stay close to us through this assessment. Because when it's done, when it's done, they only leave us an assessment. They're not here. They utilize our folks to be those interrupters, who I assume will be working alongside the JIT team, the Forsyth County Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the police departments. So I'll just leave that, that, because that's what I'm looking for.
I would love for that to take place, Commissioner McDaniels.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Sheriff, thank you. I wholeheartedly approve of this. I think we're getting confused by bringing up Cure Violence in connection with this. I'm just willing to work on one thing at a time. And I would like for us to approve it, but it seems like the holdup is that not having the local agreement with the city of Winston-Salem and with Kernersville. So do you intend to do that, have, bring, form a local agreement?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with Chief Thompson. She was out of pocket. She got back in town Sunday. Of course, you know, they lost Officer McDonald. So her and I talked briefly on that. She said that she had spoken with her city manager, and her and I would talk later. Matter of fact, we were together yesterday briefly.
Well, can you get that done pretty soon so we can move forward, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I think we might want to take a recess here in a minute. But before we do that, I'd like to see if there's anything you would like to add to what we've already talked about.
Well, I don't think Ayesha's finished.
Sure.
There are more, there are more proposals on this list. And I particularly have a comment about the last one.
Okay, well, don't go away, Sheriff. The vice chairman does have some information he needs.
So let me just back, kind of back up. So what I'm hearing is some interest in this. And so, you know, the direction here would be to really work towards some type of interlocal agreement. I don't think the funding level here is necessarily exactly what you want to approve. But what we'll do is, we'll see, when you see this, you'll see this in two places. You'll see this in a resolution that outlines all these recommendations that you'd vote on in the next cycle. And then, and part of that will be, you know, asking the sheriff and other staff to work through an interlocal agreement. And then you'll see the interlocal agreement at some point in time. So I'm sorry, Ayesha.
I have a question about that. So the expenditure request, is that coming out of the ARPA funds? And when we talk about the interlocal agreement, so is the city participating in that expenditure?
Yeah. So I think what will have to happen there is, I've talked with Lee about it. You know, their value proposition is, do they want to use some of their ARPA money to sort of marry this up and with that? And so, you know, now what's a little different is they have a dedicated gang unit already. And so that gang unit's active in this community. And so what I think that everybody wants to see coming back to it is, okay, how does the current gang unit interact with it? Because those are resources that the community's already paying for. What new money or ARPA money or whatever does the city want to match up with this? Do, and how does it fit in with the expanded program that's already in place? And then obviously, now the sheriff's the primary SRO provider, you know, that, I think, fits into it, because that's one place where all this work will get done. So there's a lot that'll come back to you around that. And the city, it's going to take a bit, because we're putting, this will put some pressure on the city to ask themselves some of these same policy questions.
But all of this is going on.
Gloria, you are okay with the city's?
Absolutely.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And I'll just point out that this interlocal agreement would be with you, the county, and the city of Winston-Salem and Kernersville. And so, you know, I'll certainly be happy to play a role in that. But working out an interlocal agreement with the city attorney and with Kernersville could take a little bit of time.
I was going to mention, Gordon, that school board is going to talk about SROs tonight, and they're going to make a decision, I understand, tonight, which would affect what we do.
I think that'll eventually be addressed at our briefing.
All right.
I have one final question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sir, go right ahead.
Gordon, do you happen to know how much ARPA funds Kernersville has?
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Manager.
All right. Ayesha, I think we've got, there were five or six in this grouping, and the rest of them were pretty quick. So we'll kind of zip through them.
Okay. So the next application is 10-598, The Well Center, Inc., for women in transition. Their request is for $54,000, $12,000 to assist with leasing a new Forsyth County office space. And the other half is for to hire three part-time employees, two part-time case managers, and one part-time office assistant. The recommendation here is to not fund with ARPA funds, but instead refer to the fiscal year 23 behavioral health funding process.
Comments? Okay.
The next application is 10-660, Forsyth County Public Defender's Office. They're requesting $2.2 million. And the request is to fund, they requested funds to hire additional attorneys, paralegals, and investigators for a temporary period of two to three years to reduce the backlog of cases incurred due to COVID-19, which has resulted in the public defender's office currently carrying more than twice the maximum recommended caseload. The request is for five assistant public defender attorneys, three paralegals, one investigator, one social worker, and additional space. This will be a total of 2.2 over a three-year funding period. The recommendation here is do not fund with ARPA funds, as this is a state responsibility.
Questions?
I just have one comment. I'm certainly fine with that recommendation for this first cycle. But I think eventually, in the next cycle, I mean, there's some backlog issues that are going on in the court system that are rippling in many different directions. And I, and I'm fine with this for right now. But I think, I don't think we should preclude that they would not be encouraged to apply in a different way in the future.
Okay.
All right.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we provide some bridge loans to the DA's office to maintain some employment over there at one point this year?
We, I had talked with you individually about it, but the truth was, the state took care of that. So we never had to do that. We've had to do that in the past and have a couple of times. It has to do with federal grants expiring in October and them not being notified until when we're in our budget process and all of that. But, Tom, yeah.
when we're in our budget process and all of that, but, yeah.
Ayesha?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Oh, cool, okay. So, the next application is 10-801, Action for Equity. They're requesting $5 million, and they're requesting funds to act as a fiscal agent to support the capacity and work of its Women's Gun Violence Prevention Coalition to address the ongoing and exasperated public health crisis of youth violence in the Winston-Salem community. The recommendation here is to refer to application to Cure Violence Work Group, or JCPC. In addition, earmark 1.5 million to be administered by Cure Violence Working Group, JCPC.
Questions or comments?
I, I've got, I've got a comment, a really strong suggestion. I, I have no objection to the idea of going to the JCP Work Group with this, and also the next one, not just this one, I mean, whatever, that's fine. But the part that I'm, I'm concerned about is earmarking an amount of money. We've not finished Cure Violence, you know, review, we haven't gone through, I mean, I, I mean, the, the amount that we may want to support for this year could be less than that, it could be more than that, and I think it's premature to earmark an amount of money now for this at all. I mean, I, I think that's just premature.
I agree.
And we can, we can pull that, you know, that number's based on the number of neighborhoods we plan to work in in the next couple of years. Again, these, and this is important, the recommendations that we're giving you today, obviously, you know, we didn't tell Action for Equity we were going to be talking about this today. All of these recommendations are going to go into a resolution that's going to be in that next cycle. We may know that number by the next cycle, but we can play that one certainly by ear. And, and obviously, the Action for Equity, we've heard a lot from them, they, they've lobbied you hard for this funding, you know, we will, we, we will notify them that we're going to be talking about the, the actual board action in this next cycle. So, they're likely to come in and, and, you know, want to, want to, you know, be vocal through that process. So, just, just know that, you know, that's, that's where we.
But basically, the resolution is not going to have an amount.
Sure, it now, not, no, sir. We'll pull it out.
Yeah, because I was going to ask, the 1.5 million dollars, are you just saying that that's needed for the Cure Violence Work Group, JCPC, period? Or is that earmarking just for this application?
I did not, I did not interpret you were earmarking for the application, it was for...
Yeah, but it says refer application, so I'm just being...
Yeah, we're really saying, we're really saying, I think, you know, the Action for Equity, passion and efforts have a role in Cure Violence, I think we all know that, and so we're just saying...
I would agree with them, then we're good, okay, thank you, I'm clear.
Okay, Ayesha, you're on.
And then, the last application under gun violence and crime prevention is applicant 10-827, Youth Collaborative, Inc. They're requesting $3,000, $300,000, and they have a gang prevention intervention program called Project ETS, which is operating at full capacity, serving 30 youth. They're requesting funds for the following things, purchase of another company vehicle, increase current staff hours to 40 hours a week, hire additional full-time street outreach worker, and provide mental health services. Just like the last applicant, we are referring this application to Cure Violence Work Group, JCPC. In addition, the same thing that, just earmarking that 1.5 million to be administered by Cure Violence, JCPC.
Comments, questions?
Last question, Chairman, with the number six of sub-initiatives, gun and gang violence prevention, there were five applications, so these were the only two that were eligible for the ARPA grants funding?
These five were gun violence and crime prevention.
They were all eligible.
Oh, oh, five, 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 okay, fair enough. I thought it was just two, because the sheriff was separate.
Oh, no.
This, I thought, okay, thank you.
You may continue.
Okay, I think that is all, questions?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, so if you go to the slide number 13, and I was just going to comment on kind of where we are in this process real quickly, that's the list of the sub-areas that we are in, yeah. And so, you know, obviously, we've taken care of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 with the work that we've done today. And so, the workforce development and educational attainment, you know, those we have started on, we've gotten those shared with the schools, but, you know, I just wanted y'all to see the picture, these are the four other remaining areas that we've got to work on in this grant cycle with these, and so, and we were going to take them pretty much in this order, if it's okay with, with you, and you can see how many grants we have in each one of those groupings. Obviously, public health is the largest one with 56 applications. We've got 33 in the workforce development, educational attainment, 26 in arts, tourism, and small business support, five in rental utility and financial assistance, and 56 in public health. So, that's our work program under the, kind of the process that we've been through, and hopefully, this was helpful today, because this is exactly what we'll do in these other four areas. And if we need to change that process, you know, let me know.
So, Chairman, one more question, with the JIT team. So, because this is being serviced for three years through our ARPA funding, what happens after that, how is it sustained?
It will either, you know, you'll either need to sort of phase it out or kind of incorporate it into a new, new model, or raise taxes, yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have just 30 seconds?
Go right ahead.
My colleague will, and I'd ask the question.
Sure.
But I'm supporting JIT because it sounds like Jedi, and I think it'll be very effective.
Okay, all right, well, thank you all.
And, and Mr. Chairman, to answer an earlier question from Commissioner Elamine, Kernersville's receiving $7.2 million in ARPA funds.
Glad you said that. Kernersville News is watching.
So, the only other item we have, Mr. Chairman, today is just finalizing this agenda. Do you want to take a five-minute recess and come back and then finalize the agenda?
I've got a better idea, let's take a 7 minute and 33 second.
Okay.
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 Thank you.[325.22]